With the work session, if anyone's trying to get connected, please feel free to do so. And Janie, I think I heard you say that should just tap right into the Lex E D U?
Yes.
Very good. Exciting to be back in person. Yes, sir.
So I'm working for Lex E D U. Is it upper case or something?
I think you actually use the settings and go live on.
Yeah, so we do here.
It should automatically connect. I was gonna say, it didn't ask me for a password. It just jumped in. Probably because it's configured to the network.
We had Michelle before we went virtual services.
Not yet. We'll notate that we have a full crew and we are in person. Full crew minus Mr. Smith, who's not able to be with us. He's out of town. So unless there are any anxieties or issues, will Jim take it away?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Thomas Wagner, Jake and myself will go over a briefing on infrastructure-related projects and some financial aspects of how we're going to meet some of those needs. And Thomas is going to lead off with an overview of the current infrastructure projects. And he's here because Jeff Martone could not be here, but Thomas has some good notes and great knowledge of what we're doing.
Welcome, Thomas. Glad you're here.
Glad to see everybody back in person again. I think I've seen most of you over the year, except for Mr. Ayers. I don't believe we've ever met, but your name did come up a lot with the water runoff there on Lime Kiln Road, so. So three major projects going on here this summer. I can tell you Public Works is glad to get back to it and a lot of contractors in the area are as well. For this year, the summer 2021 street resurfacing program. This season's schedule includes Houston Street, Ross Road, Rebel Ridge, Sentinel Lane, Overhill Drive, Overlook Circle, and McDowell Street, the dead-end section, much to the TJ Trimmel was very happy. It's only taken him 15 years, he said, to get that done. Adams can, oh, I'm sorry, and also to include the City Hall and Police Department parking lot. Adams Construction is under contract for this work. Their bid was approximately $370,000. Budget was established at approximately $470,000. Additional work will be added as Public Works sees fit. The city had held a pre-construction meeting with Adams. Verbally, they are intended to start work July 19th. P W has yet to receive a written schedule and a notice to proceed has not been provided to them to this date. Providence Hill I N I repairs. The city recently exercised their first renewal year of its five-year term contract with A M Liner East. A M Liner has submitted this year's unit price escalation percentages, which they are currently under review, but we're thinking they're probably going to be about 8%. P W intends to provide A M Liner with an engineering service order for approximately $700,000 for the Providence Hill work at the beginning of F Y 22. The sheriff's run interceptor sewer shed will be targeted first due to the VDOT property. A M Liner estimates they can begin video inspection in July. Once this intelligence is gathered, materials can be ordered and a more definitive work schedule developed. There could be as much as a three-month lag in actual construction, given the recent COVID material shortages. And for the big one, Diamond Hill Water and Sewer Project. W R A's final project estimate, sorry, estimate was as follows. $5,680,000 for construction and a construction contingency of $50,000 for consultant construction faves services and $140,000 for lining services that will be performed under the A M Liner I D I Q contract. Total estimate, $5,870,000. Bids were received last Friday. Randy Hostetter was the low bidder with a price of 5.2, I'm sorry, $5,209,873.89. W R A is presently evaluating this bid and will provide an award recommendation shortly. P W has coordinated with Jake regarding the final V R A project financing amount and recommends adhering to the $5,870,000 to deal with the project contingencies, rock removal being one of them. P W hopes to make an award to Randy Hostetter in the very near future so that contracts may be ratified in the next 30 to 40 days. Once under contract, Hostetter may start ordering project materials. COVID-related materials are estimated at a minimum of 90 days. The city will pay for stored materials bonded warehouse to minimize future delays. So that being said, we're pretty much going to try to order all the material for the project at one time, so we're not in a lag. We'll see how that goes.
Thomas, relatively speaking, if you do order it all, is there room at Public Works to be able to store all that?
Yes, sir. Yeah, and we won't charge anything for that. Hopefully keep some price off the project.
Terrific. Members of council, Leslie, go ahead.
Yeah, does that, so with the 90-day minimum, does that change the start time?
Yes, yes. Once we do the notice to proceed, we'll actually probably extend the project just because we can't get materials. And 90 days is a minimum. Now it's up to about 120.
That's your estimation?
Yes.
Yeah. Tap here. There you go. Let's see.
Maybe if I turn my.
Yep. Charles, yeah. Charles, did you have a question or you just?
I just wanted to.
Or go ahead and tap it. When it's red, you're hot. And if somebody is in the queue, it'll be green. There we go.
So this is good?
Yes.
All right. All right. I just wanted to play with it a little bit. Just, I'm always amused when bids come in for $5,209,873.89. I always know that somebody sharpened their pencil when those kind of numbers come in in there. So just an observation.
Yeah.
Exactly, exactly.
I think the pencil went out a little bit.
Right, exactly.
Hey, a quick question. I'm just curious, how many bids came in on that project?
There was three.
Right.
There was three bids, and we were sweating because the first bid was at about six point, I'm sorry, 8.9 million. The second one came in at about 8.7. Randy came in at 5.2.
Were the other trucks locally contracted?
No. Well, I take that back. I'm sorry. Monty Atkins was. He's very small. The other one was E C Pace. I believe they're out of Lynchburg.
And three, man, have we worked with Mr. Hostetter on the project this long?
Yes, sir. The Main Street Waterline project two summers ago. Yes, sir.
And to recall.
The results were superior for the Main Street Waterline project there.
Do you think I'm seeing there as an overall very good job?
I remember Jeff Martone talking about how good the working relationship was between the contractor Hostetter and himself.
He's been working with the city for probably 20 years or more in multiple projects, so none of this under undertaking is largest Diamond Hill Water and Sewer Project.
So we're certainly glad to have him bid on this.
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir. It's good to have local guy.
He also worked on the Thompson's Knoll project?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so he's used to finding rocks.
Yes. He's prepared for it.
I thought he should be.
Thomas, go ahead and turn yours on. I think we got, there we go.
Since we're talking about the contractor and since he's going to be a resident basically of Diamond Hill for a while, one of the reasons that the Main Street project I thought went really well was that there was John Dyer, I believe. Didn't he help? Will we be fortunate to get a liaison or a project manager of similar?
I hope so. I wish John was still there, but I do not know that as of yet. We plan to hash all that out once we get the contract going.
Great, because just like, again, on Main Street, coordinating with businesses and being respectful, we're going to have a ton of neighbors.
Goes a long way.
Yeah, a ton of neighbors.
Especially now that we're in backyards.
Exactly. And near a school and just, there's going to be a lot. So you obviously know that. So thank you.
And Randy's particularly familiar with Diamond Hill because he's doing the swimming pool construction and work for B M I right now.
Concurrent right now, yes.
So part of the reason it may have been a more attractive bid, the equipment is all right here.
So everyone that's going to be affected is going to be pretty invasive, you think, on each person's property?
It depends. Yes, ma'am, but it, hold on, see how I am on. Yes, it could be. Fences, backyards, you know, we did look at putting everything into the city right away, but price went way up for that. So our intent was to keep it where it is. And I'm hoping that Randy can finish a yard very well, because I know a lot of people, once you're done, it doesn't look the same, you know. We get the grass growing back the way it was. That's hopefully.
What about driveways?
Same. Everything should be put back the way it was before a project started. And it's in our easements. That's what it states.
Yes, asking for the citizens' patience. It's going to be a messy project, but sewer work is never not messy. Thank you, Thomas. I think that does the questions.
We're not sure yet. Jim's question is, when is the project going to start? We have not done a notice to proceed, and it depends also materials. So right now, 90 days. I'm sorry?
Did I check? Did you check the same next summer?
Oh, no, no. The Diamond Hill project? Oh, no, we're starting July 1 officially.
But you've got 120 days to get materials.
Yes, but hopefully, you see what I'm saying? We are starting July 1, but we don't want to push it next summer.
One more question, and just if you remember when you did the Taylor Street reconstruction, you did a meeting, a site meeting essentially with neighbors?
Yes.
And I know that everyone had a lot to say to you. I was there, but it was also a great opportunity for a lot of people to hear the project, see the project, and then, you know, you took a lot of contact information and did a lot of follow-up.
That's correct. That's correct. And Jim has already requested that we do that prior to this project.
Great.
So that is in the works.
I figured you would, but I'm always the one to ask very obvious questions and let you answer.
No, it's always better to let the people know.
That went really well on Taylor Street, and I think it'll be necessary for sure. Thank you.
It's just a lot more people on this project.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Very good. Any other questions? Thomas, thank you. Glad you're here. Who drew the short straw next? Welcome, Jake.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Glad to be back in person finally. Just quickly on Thomas's point on the Diamond Hill project, some good news to share on the financing end. If you recall, council authorized the issuance of up to a $6.75 million bond in the financing resolution. The latest preliminary numbers I've seen from V R A are extremely positive. We should have enough to generate the proceeds for the $5.8 million project fund, plus to cover our local costs of issuance, with only issuing a $5.375 million revenue bond. So and all-in true interest cost is estimated to only be about 2%. So very promising financing terms that we're seeing so far. Hoping market conditions hold out a little bit longer until the bond sale in July, but so far, very, very positive news to report. Here tonight, I'd like to give a little bit of an overview on where we stand as we come to the end of F Y 21 with our available funds that we have, F Y 20 carryover, and projecting where we might finish the year as far as excess revenues. So I believe in the material sent out to you, there was an accounting of our F Y 20 carryover balance. I'd like to start there. So as you may recall, we had about a little over $1.1 million total that we carried over from.
Just to make sure, the budget performance report?
No, I'm sorry. It's the sheet that says F Y 20 carryover balance.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yes. So a little over $1.1 million in total F Y 20 carryover that we carried over from last fiscal year. And we appropriated in the budget $282,000 to balance our F Y 21 budget. So that left us with about $836,000 that we carried over, and there have been subsequent appropriations throughout the year, as you can see them itemized there, from the website upgrade, the mini excavator, speed trailer for P D, the air filler for the fire department, and $60,000 for improvements at Evergreen Cemetery. Council did also authorize $7,500 in improvements for the recycling center, but pleased to report that Public Works was able to fulfill that with grant proceeds that they had from their D E Q grant, so we did not need to appropriate any funds. So our remaining balance of F Y 20 carryover as of yesterday is $644,918. So that's the total amount of funding we have remaining from that carryover. And now moving on to, as Mayor Friedman mentioned, the budget performance report. So with this, I've tried to project where we might finish up the year with revenues over expenditures in the general fund. Down at the bottom, you'll see the column there that has 616, 2021 beside it. If the fiscal year were to end as of yesterday, this is a pretty close approximation of what our surplus would be, $1.376 million. Now, obviously, we still have the remainder of June, and we have, you know, a few months of revenues to accrue back into F Y 20. We'll probably have a really firm number on this by mid to late August, once we've done final accruals and closed the books. But projecting out to the end of the fiscal year and trying to factor in accruals as well as upcoming revenues that I feel comfortable that we'll have over the next few months, the closest projection I can give right now for a year-end surplus is $1.198 million is what we're looking at at this point. So very, very positive news there. Revenues continue to trend upward. Sales tax, meals tax, lodging tax, all of our revenues that we, you know, predicted to struggle during COVID and did to some degree are now really rapidly shooting up as we're coming out of the pandemic. So very positive news to report there. Now combining these two amounts from the carryover and where we may end up with surplus at year's end in the general fund, this brings us to a total of about $1.84 million in funds that we have potentially available to allocate somewhere in the budget. And I believe Jim will get into in a little bit some of his recommendations for this funding, but I would like to touch on that briefly on the recommendations and ideas we have for the use of this funding moving forward. From the carryover balance of $644,000, the first proposal that we have is to restore our equipment replacement funding that we cut in the F Y 21 budget. If you recall, during the budget process for last fiscal year, we cut our equipment replacement funding in half. So $303,370 would restore our original full equipment replacement funding.
This isn't in front of us, is it?
No, this is, this is not.
Okay.
This is, sorry, I'm just reporting these numbers here to you now. That's not.
Just making sure.
Yes.
If they were in front of me, I wouldn't find them.
Sorry, caught that. So $303,370 is what will take to restore equipment funds. The remainder of that funding, there's about $341,000 left. We would like to put that towards capital projects, towards the C I P fund. And so with those two amounts, that would completely close out the carryover funding that we still have available. Projecting ahead and looking that we may potentially have about a $1.2 million surplus, we would additionally like to take from that projected surplus $1 million and add to the C I P Capital Projects Fund. And on the last document that I believe was made available to council in advance of the meeting, you'll see a document titled C I P: Projected Sources and Uses of Funds. So what I've done here is taken an accounting of our C I P funding and anticipated expenses all the way through F Y 26, through the end of our current C I P. And if you combine the $341,000 and an additional million from F Y 21 surplus, those funds, if we add that to the C I P, we would have an excess fund balance in the C I P of about $1.256 million. So I know one of the recommendations that's been brought forward to you is the replacement of the Route 60 Bridge over Woods Creek. The current estimate for repairs to that bridge is $1.82 million. So as you see on the bottom of this sheet, I've taken an accounting of the excess C I P fund balance that this would generate. We've also discussed three upcoming bridge repair projects that are currently programmed in the C I P that we feel comfortable are not a priority, given the condition of the Route 60 over Woods Creek Bridge. There are obviously some repairs that need to be done, but we feel comfortable with their condition at this time. So those three projects were the Ross Road Bridge Project scheduled for F Y 22, the Diamond Street Bridge Project for F Y 24, and the Moses Mill Bridge Project for F Y 25. If we defer those projects and kick them into not programmed off of the C I P, this frees up $1.872 million, which would be sufficient funding to cover the $1.82 million that we would need for the Route 60 over Woods Creek Bridge Project. So and additionally, you know, that would leave probably about $200,000, give or take a little bit, left in F Y 21 surplus. You know, those funds could fall into fund balance. We, you know, could at a later date discuss additional uses for that, whether it be capital, equipment, what have you. But this is the recommendation that we have, and, you know, we tried to take what available funding we have and foresee having and make it available for this project, and this would generate the funds necessary to do that. So with that, I'll take any financial questions you might have, and then I believe Jim's going to kind of summarize and give a little more detail on our recommendations.
Leslie dialed in first.
Jake, on the $1.8 million for the bridge, does that take into account, do we get, will we qualify for some VDOT funding, some of the state-of-good-repair funds?
We don't, Jeff is currently in the process of identifying whether that particular bridge qualifies for state-of-good-repair. From our conversations with him, even if it did, the earliest we would potentially receive funding is F Y 27 or 28 at this junction.
Could we get reimbursed or no? We go ahead. Okay.
No.
So $1.8 is the total cost, and we are looking at funding the whole thing. Okay.
That's correct. Yes, and we discussed the condition of the bridge. Now, you know, it's a gamble whether or not we would receive state-of-good-repair funding, and considering the condition it's in, we felt like it would be prudent to address this sooner rather than later.
And Mr. Alligood.
Sorry. Yeah, I want to back up to the previous council meeting. When I asked the question with Davenport representative, I asked what the projected annual debt service was looking like it was going to be for this, for the Diamond Hill project. And as I recall, the answer at that time was roughly $450,000. And there, is it still $450,000 with the new interest rate?
No. The latest numbers I've seen for annual debt service are approximately $350,000.
Wow.
So it's dropped considerably.
Wow.
Yes.
Thanks.
Mr. Ayers.
Jake, a quick question. If we push, the only thing I'm concerned about is the pushing off of Ross Road, Diamond Street, and Moses Mill. If we do push those back, is there a possibility that we could get funding from the state on those projects at a later date?
There's possibility, yes. There's possibility that we could receive funding for those. And, you know, I think looking overall, you know, for bridge repairs that are in, you know, the $1,000 to $200,000 range, you know, maybe easier down the road to find funding for those versus a $1.8 million project that's in dire need of repair now. So I think that's, in our discussions with Jeff, where that recommendation came from, that it's not quite the priority of Route 60 over Woods Creek.
Okay.
And it also has the potential of some state-of-good-repair fundings.
Okay, thanks. David?
Two things. First, of course, we still in the future will have to talk about any potential funds from American Rescue Plan. Some of those dollars can be used for infrastructure. And then, of course, the formula for loss of revenue, which the formula for loss of revenue could in fact put money back almost that's unrestricted, if you will, because we're able to demonstrate through that formula what we've lost, right? So I mean, that could be some funds when we're ready to do those calculations and everything. Okay, so that's a good thing. I am thrilled, of course, that we're addressing the carryover from F Y 20, what we project for F Y 21. I obviously am always thrilled to invest in capital, equipment. Those are very boring things to invest in, but it's our job to invest for the future and balance the projects that people see immediately and, but also that future councils have money to spend. I hate that we have to spend $1.8 immediately. But let me pivot to the utility fund. I know that this was not a report on the utility fund, but I feel like the middle of June, it always starts raining an absolute ton, and we end up having significant, you know, budget issues with the utility fund. I know you don't have those numbers in front of you, et cetera, but do you have any sense on where we are with the utility fund? Because that is always a downer at this time of year, it seems, due to I N I and treatment.
Yeah, so those are good questions. The utility fund, as far as revenues, we're projected to fall short of our revenue projection for water sewer revenues this year, and I think a lot of that had to do with the timing of students leaving earlier and being gone longer, less overall activity in town. We really performed well over the first quarter, and then revenues really plummeted over the second quarter. I'm pleased to report the last three utility billings have improved substantially, but I don't think with what I'm seeing, it's going to improve fast enough to hit our revenue target for the year. There's a potential that we could fall short of our revenue target, $250,000 to $350,000. Expenses are pretty stable and tracking where you'd want to see them right now overall. The only problem is that our third-quarter M S A invoice was very high due to I N I that we had throughout January through March, a lot of rainfall and wintry precipitation that found its way into the sewer system. So I anticipate expenses will exceed budget in the utility fund. So overall, you know, I wish I had better news to report, but I think we'll have a slight operating deficit in the utility fund at year's end.
And it seems, I mean, that's what we've had, and it's been half a million here, half a million there, and it adds up, you know? And so I just, again, I know that you weren't presenting on that, but I just wanted to kind of get a sense of what those numbers are looking like. Thank you.
And just saying, the projections for the utility fund aren't positive. The projections for the M S A already prescribed rate increases are going to put continuous pressure on the utility fund, and I don't foresee that changing. And in fact, I foresee it getting worse in there, and that's something that we're going to have to reckon with, and somewhere, some dollars got to come from some pocket to fill that deficit. Where are they going to come from?
Well, you know, we've tried to be looking at rate increases for this year. Obviously, we originally projected 8%. We were able to dial that back to 5 and 1/2. You know, we're very cognizant of the impact that these compounding rate increases are having. And, you know, unfortunately, more M S A wholesale increases are on the horizon. I think they're projected at about 9% for both water and sewer for next year. So, you know, it's something that we're going to try to manage as best as possible while also keeping in mind the rate increases for the citizens and the customers, the end users of the system as well. And I don't want to get ahead of myself. It's obviously a conversation for another day, but, you know, A R P funding, one of the huge parts of that in allowable expenses is water and wastewater infrastructure. And, you know, we'll certainly discuss this as the funds come in and detail the plans for these funds further, but, you know, I see a real opportunity here for using some of those funds to really bolster the utility fund for the next several years. This was a, combined with. This was a, combined with this financing effort, which is, you know, really favorable terms right now, I think it was great to borrow a large amount now while interest rates are low and we have really favorable market conditions. And then, you know, adding some additional funds to that to cover projects over the next few years as we stare down the Jackson Phase 2 project in FY '25, and that's a big one, about $7.2 million. So, you know, anything we can do to add funding to the utility fund to help out with some of these projects over the next several fiscal years, I think we're positioning ourselves well for FY '25.
Well, that was really good news to hear that the interest rate was so favorable for this financing to save us $100,000 roughly.
Yes.
Annually.
Yes.
For how many years?
20 years.
20 years.
Yes, that's it. Great when you can issue a bond with principal amount lower than the total amount of proceeds you need and get that funding, so very, very good news.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Take all the credit. Pun intended. Jake, looking at the chart that you gave us on the CIP: Projected Sources and Uses, just want to make sure I'm reading this accurately. In fiscal year '23, our CIP projects totaled $4.590129.
Yes.
When we look at our funding of our CIP, will the cash be there to accomplish that $4.590?
I think so, and, you know, that's one reason why for this fiscal year, you know, we budgeted less of contribution from the general fund. We know that it's going to take some time for our revenues to totally recover. I think next year, our budget is very conservative as far as revenues go. I do, I know it's way early and way getting ahead of myself, but I do think we'll perform very well next year with the budget. I think our revenue figures, I tried to be conservative and not project an immediate turnaround from COVID by any means. So I do think revenues will be there to support it. And additionally, we have, you know, good fund balance in the CIP fund. As you can see here, you know, the available fund balance all the way through FY '26, even if we put in these additional funds, we have enough funding between general fund contributions and fund balance to satisfy our entire five-year CIP. So I feel confident that we'll have the funding available for next year. I know next year is a very project-heavy, when I say next year, I mean FY '23. It's a very project-heavy year, but I feel confident we'll have funding for it.
Very good. Thank you.
Without having to raise taxes?
Correct.
For CIP, we did not include anything for the jail, and we know that jail is going to have some capital expenses for even this year. Where are we planning to take that from?
Well, so far, there are some capital expenses for the jail budget for this year, for FY '22. They have a capacity study and some other smaller capital projects, and we have begun to put those into the CIP. So you'll see for FY '22, the beginning of the jail's capacity study is in there, and a few other capital projects are included in those figures. And additionally, this FY, this CIP that you see also includes a pretty sizable estimate for city hall improvements coming up in FY '25, so. And that's a very sizable project, so, you know, looking ahead at our projections of contributions and fund balance, we're still in a good position even with that included.
I'll just say, I'm glad to see that. That's excellent, because that is a project that keeps getting put off further and further. We've got to do it.
Very good. Thank you, Jake. Good job.
All right. Thank you all.
I'll reiterate that Jake did do a very good job, and I do want to emphasize that, one, our revenues are in great shape. We're going to touch on that a little later, but right today, sales tax allowance at 105% of budget, and we still have two more months to collect.
For sales tax, we have
Three.
June, which we just received today, and then July, August.
Yeah, three more months, so we're in pretty good shape. The other thing is that Jake put together very conservative numbers. So when he says we're going to reach $1.9, excuse me, $1.2 million, it'll be higher than that. So we'll do better than that. Third thing is, obviously, by recommending we take a million of that end-of-year balance, we're not going to take everything out of the fund balance. That remainder, whatever that is, we'll look at that, we'll do an accounting in August when the year's ended, and we can show you what that dollar is going to look like, and it can go into the fund balance. It won't be the $1.6 or $1.5, but, you know, $400,000, $500,000 perhaps into the fund balance at that time. So we're very confident in that. Jake's very conservative in his estimates and his work, and so I'm very highly confident in that. I'd like to go over very quickly the bridge information that is provided to you. I think you probably can see very easily what we're trying to portray. There are a number of projects or bridges, I should say, that we have to look at and take time planning on how we're going to address those bridges. There's one column in pink, and that bridges are, that bridge is funded. The columns that are in green have had recent repairs, so we don't really have to worry about those. It's only those columns that are in the yellow that we have to worry about in the future. And all of those are in the design phase right now, except for the Moses Mill Bridge. That's over the mill race to go to Jordan's Point Park. As we indicated earlier, Jeff's gone over this, you've seen this information already. The biggest project is the Woods Creek, the Bridge over Woods Creek, the Nelson Street West Project. And at $1.82 million, when we saw that, and we also saw the score, if you look above that, you can see the fiscal years, and we do an annual bridge report to the state, and the scores have fallen off over the last several years and dramatically fell off in 2021, which is when we became alerted to the fact that we really had to deal with this bridge today. And as Jake said, it's true, we've got some money in our hands today. If we were to wait and do that bridge or attempt to do it three or four years from now, $1.8 million would be very difficult to find in our CIP or in current revenues at that point in time, and given some of the pressures we probably will also feel then in the future. With the amount of money that we have today, I strongly recommend that we do move forward with it. Jake went through the dollars with you. We can make it work, and we can also replenish the Equipment Replacement Fund, which is also vital. You know, we have a fire truck, a ladder truck coming up in the near future that's going to be a big expense as well. I think it's $1.4, Jake?
That's correct.
$1.4 million today. Every year we put it off, those prices go up. So we need to keep that Equipment Replacement Fund very strong as well. So those are the two things I'd like to ask you today, is to give me at least a thumbs up that we can proceed, we can come back in July, and we can put that appropriation before you get it approved, put those extra dollars from the carryover into the Equipment Replacement Fund, the dollars that Jake indicated we'd have in revenues this year, $1 million, into the CIP, and then we defer those other projects, those other bridges. As Jake said, those are relatively small projects. Jeff is confident that these can, they can be put off without any damage, without any harm, if you will. And I think Councilmember Seagull mentioned, or maybe it was Councilmember Strong, that there is a possibility we could get some state of good repairs or revenue sharing funds for those projects in FY '27, '28. Jeff is going to apply for both revenue sharing and state of good repair funds for every project. Now, truthfully, the odds of getting every one of those projects is about zero, and if we got one or two of them, we'd be very, very fortunate. But they can be put off, whereas this project over the Woods Creek Route 60 West Bridge really cannot be put off. And as Councilmember Strong noted, we will not get any reimbursement from VDOT. If we were to take the chance and wait, we'd have to wait at least four years, unwise, and the chances of getting that funded would be fairly low, from what Jeff has said with his contacts from VDOT. So those are the two things I really like you to consider this evening, and again, get a thumbs up if nothing else. We don't have to make a motion coming into open session tonight, but we'll prepare that for the beginning of the fiscal year, probably bring it back to you in July. And any questions that Jake didn't answer, I would be happy to try and take a stab at those.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Thinking back on that 2% money, is there a way we can combine some of these projects and take advantage of additional 2% money?
It's possible. It's possible we could. The only issue I could foresee with combining too much at one time is meeting spend down. So if we were to borrow money, you know, in form bond proceeds, we have to spend those funds down on tax-exempt bonds by a certain schedule prescribed by the IRS, or else they won't maintain their tax-exempt status. So I believe, you know, after six months, you have to have 10% of the funds expended, 12 months, another certain percent. So we have all these projects going on, it may get difficult to spend down all of those funds in order to meet those milestones. That could be the only potential hiccup in getting too many projects going on that I can envision. But other than that, I mean, it is a, it is a good time to borrow money, as we've obviously seen with financial results from this project so far.
I think it'd be interesting to at least think about the possibility of doing that and just kind of do some back-of-the-envelope calculations, some estimates, to see if it's favorable. You know, in terms of repairing a bridge, we're not talking about a five-year job to do a bridge. That's, a bridge repair replacement is, in my view, correct me if I'm not seeing it right, a fairly short-term project. And the, you know, the idea, the bridges we're talking about here locally, we're not talking about across the Mississippi River here, but fairly short-term money. And so the possibility of maybe short-term 2% money is, I'm kind of thinking 2% is pretty cheap money.
2% is certainly cheap money. And the concept, if we borrowed, went in the VRA and borrowed $5 million to knock out a bunch of different projects, what I'm hearing you say, the problem may be we can't get the contractors in to fulfill and complete the job in the timeframe that he's been spent. But the concept is sound, and Jake said he'll look into that, so grateful for that. Dennis?
Yeah, I mean, one thing that would be concerning about that approach, which makes a lot of sense, but I think, Jim, you mentioned that, you know, these repairs will give us 10, 15 years on this, I mean, it's, so you want to use up your bridges, basically. So if it's possible to extend this a little bit longer, it would be in our best interest, because it's not like you spend it now and it's good forever. It has a, you know.
As will.
Yeah, so.
There are a number of factors we'll look at, and I think Jake and I can sit down with Jeff, and we can look at, you know, whether it be the debt service, of course, can we actually get the engineering and design through the same time period for all five of these bridges? And then, again, contractors are busy, supplies at this point, materials are scarce. I don't know if that'll be true in 12 months or 18 months as we start bringing those projects online, but to go ahead and try and move them all at once does leave us a little at risk, as Jake mentioned. It's a good idea, though, we'll look at it.
To that end, Jim, when we look at the Route 60, $1.82, I anticipate that's what the engineers have suggested the repair would be. We won't know until we go out to bid.
Correct.
It could come back at 2.8, it could come back at 1.5, and we'll cross that bridge, unintended, when we get there.
Yes.
But it's concerning that the $1.82, I guess, I trust Jeff, but I'm not sure the engineers during the work where $8 million, we're fortunate that Randy came in closer to what we were expecting. Not sure why, but I'm just, have anxiety that we have the $1.82 available and we put towards it, but that's not going to be the actual cost. I'm afraid it's going to be significantly higher, but.
No assurances, you're correct. We might have to drop back at that point in time if we face those kind of issues. Or, as Councilmember Seagull suggested, we do have that American Rescue Plan funding. We don't need to spend it all down. We may decide, one way of dealing with that is to put some of it in reserve.
Right. Just wanted to raise that issue, and I want to compliment Jeff and his team and all the staff for identifying this bridge and its deficiencies. There's nothing worse than when a bridge fails, especially Route 60 and all the traffic that that supports in and out. Talking with Dennis earlier, how the detour would work, it's going to be precarious, and hopefully the downtime of that bridge will be very short, and on our terms, not on default terms. Relative to Sarah's Run and Thornhill, Ross Road in particular, and Diamond, I'm not sure when those bridges were constructed, but I'm mindful of the circumstance that we had with the bridge behind Waddell. There were no real good records as to when it was installed or the integrity of that bridge, so it was programmed and replaced. The most difficult part of that job was removing because it was so secure and probably would have lasted another 100 years, as I understand it from the demo guys. I just have some anxiety, repairs are terrific. When we look at replacing some of these, sometimes concerned that engineers want to replace bridges because they're old, but they may be so doggone fortified that they're not going anywhere. So just still talking about that bridge and want to make sure they're in good shape. When we don't have the records, assuming that they're going to fail eminently is not always the best outcome, so.
I don't believe, and Thomas might know, but I don't believe we're addressing the abutments in any of these bridges, other than there's a culvert replacement, I believe, in one of the projects.
I'm not sure.
Okay. Yeah, and you're right, some of those abutments have a lot more concrete than they need on today's standards.
Absolutely.
Jeff did break up one for the Woods Creek, I'm sorry, the bridge at Jordan's Point that goes over the middle race.
Yes, that's the only one.
He beat out the same abutments, probably did some replacement, but he hooked back on that look and said, "My gosh, I don't know why."
I think it was the superstructure that looked, they said needed to be repaired, but when Jeff looked at it, the abutments were his way you could put a screwdriver in and take some of the concrete out. I think it was the other way around, but.
Probably the reverse.
And, you know, and we'll look at that more closely as we review those projects, all of them.
Certainly. Any other questions that council has for Jim? Yes, sir.
Just since I had mentioned the revenue from a cigarette tax, it appears Buena Vista is not going to enact one.
Hmm.
They did that tonight.
Any other questions relative to the dollars and cents that Jake and Jim have provided to us, the projects?
I just want to thank you guys for all your work on this, and it makes perfect sense that we move forward with this bridge.
Thank you, and I appreciate the time you spent considering these difficult issues. You know, there are plenty of needs for all these funds, and you make choices and don't make everybody happy, obviously, so thank you.
When we have large crowds concerned about naming of streets and cemeteries and proposed changes with buildings and real estate, always wish that those people were here to hear these other issues that we get to contend with. And the important part, and I think, David, you said, and I'll put words in your mouth, water and sewer is not sexy, but it certainly is necessary, and everyone counts on it. So all of these projects, we greatly appreciate the effort and time that staff's put into getting us to this point and getting us through the other pieces and parts, so.
I'll let Thomas carry that back to Public Works, but I'll also let Jake and his crew know.
I have an observation, and it's more than a formal question. We had talked some time ago collectively about the VDOT property and the inability of the sewer line that runs out there to service any development of any size and whatnot. Is this an opportunity with these ARP funds and whatnot to throw that project?
Well, we could, Mr. Alligood, but if you recall, the problem with that whole area is the INI. The interceptor itself will carry the sewer, the sewage needs of the businesses and homes that area. It's big enough. So if we eliminate the INI, we don't have to replace the interceptor. So my advice to us as a strategy, put the money in getting rid of the INI, don't replace an interceptor that's, you know, sized appropriately to handle that south end of the town.
Well, I think council, didn't we appropriate almost $1 million to go towards reducing INI? We bought the excavator, any excavator.
Yeah, we're moving forward. You heard about the liner project from Thomas, and that's part of it. It won't solve all the problems. We're going to have to come back to you and say, you know, there's probably a few other odds and ends in that area of town where there's INI we'll have to handle yet.
In general, I'm thinking about the American Rescue Plan.
Well, stay tuned. The expectation to seal perhaps part of Jim's report this evening is that we will, as a council, hear year-end numbers likely in August and have discussions about the ARP funds and recommendations from staff on how to best utilize them and leverage those for more success and successful projects. those for more success and successful projects. But given the time, let everyone have a chance to stretch their legs and regroup for our 7 o'clock meeting. And if there's nothing else that Janie needs, I'll set. We will stand adjourned, and the time I have is 6:51.